Call the order of a regular meeting in Goodyear City Council, 29 May 2007. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Cavalier if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may join us in prayer if you wish. Heavenly Father, watch over this group tonight. Help this council make the best decisions possible for the city of Goodyear and for the good of all the citizens who live here. Protect our city staff, police, and fire. And Heavenly Father, please take care of our men and women who are overseas, watching and guarding our shores for our safety. All this we ask in your name. Amen. Thank you. Councilmember Lord will not be with us this evening for personal reasons. Could I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Lord?
So moved.
Motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier, and a second from Councilmember Holland. No, all those in favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Close. You guys have it unanimously. There are no expenditures, no communications. Opportunity now for anyone from the public who would like to comment to the council on any subject that is not on this evening's agenda. Would anyone like to make a comment? Okay, saying none, we'll go to the consent agenda, and I'll ask the clerk if she'd read the consent items, but title only, please.
Item A, approve direct minutes of a work session held on May 7, 2007, a work session held on May 14, 2007, a regular meeting held on May 14, 2007, and a work session held on May 21, 2007. Item B, approve a renewal of the agreement between the city of Goodyear and Litchfield Park Service Company for the interconnect of the city of Goodyear Potable Water Distribution System with the Lipsco Potable Water Distribution System, allowing replenishment of the city of Goodyear's water supply up to 3 MGD on an as-needed basis through December 31, 2007, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Item C, approve the recommendations of the subcommittee for the community services and special event sponsorship funding requests. Item D, adopt Resolution 07-1148, amending its commitment to make certain property leased to the New Life Center available as a shelter under certain terms and conditions. Item E, approve the annual contract for $19,378 for participation in and support of the regional economic development program of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Item F, approve the preliminary plat to subdivide approximately 407 acres into 997 lots and 53 tracts located along the north side of State Route 238 adjacent to the Pinal County line for Amaranth Area 1 Phase 2, subject to stipulations. Item G, adopt Resolution 07-1147, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Scottsdale for cooperative action in the development and use of court automated system enhancements. Item H, receive and accept the April 17, 2007 Arizona Peace Officer Standards and Training Compliance Audit Report. Item I, approve a contract for services with RBF Consulting in the amount of $300,000 for planning and engineering consulting services in order to fulfill the city's obligations with Sonoran Valley LLC in the Employee Consultant Funding Agreement. Item J, adopt Resolution 07-1149, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to execute an agreement between the city of Goodyear and Maricopa County for basic animal care and control services. Item K, approve a special use permit to allow a Sprint wireless communication facility monopole on 0.02 acres in the Australia Mountain Regional Park Maintenance Yard generally located south of the southeast corner of Golf Course Drive and Vineyard Avenue with a waiver from the height limitations to a maximum height of 65 feet, subject to stipulations. Item L, award a contract to Keywood Western Company to install a 30-inch water transmission line on Cotton Lane in the amount of $978,650 and authorize the city manager to execute all relevant documents. Item M, adopt Resolution 07-1150 to earmark funds and establish an Arizona Centennial Committee for the city of Goodyear.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, could I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve of consent items 7A through 7M.
Say it again. Motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Okay, thank you. When I'm moved to the business part of our agenda, first item is to consider adoption of an ordinance to rezone 2.02 acres, Neighbor Office, and that's N-A-B-E-R Office. Rick Williams will present.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Before you this evening is a request by Mr. Verrill Neighbors to rezone approximately 2.2 acres from the agricultural urban zoning district to the commercial office zoning district for a development known as the Neighbor Office Complex, which is located at 161st Avenue and Van Buren. This would be 161st Avenue here, Van Buren along here. This is a wildfire ranch development. For orientation, the Australia Church, the St. Thomas Lutheran Church, and what I believe is deemed as Wade Acres to the north there. Now, the general plan in this area designates this area as public, quasi-public, which is conducive to churches, schools, special parks, cemeteries, wastewater treatment plants, and other municipal facilities. The request is to rezone this to commercial office. In evaluating the location here, given the general plan designation and the adjacent to the arterial, the commercial land used seemed appropriate in this location. If done with a residential flare, it can provide a nice little buffer between the arterial and the community, as well as it's appropriate located between the two churches there. We had two citizen review meetings with regards to this development. The initial citizen review meeting, we had zero participation in that meeting. And as we got closer to the original P&amp;Z data, it became apparent that the posting on the property notifying residents had been inaccurate. And just to give you a reference to where that was, as we said earlier, this is the subject property. The original posting on the property was located in about that area, which certainly gave the appearance that the two to three acres behind the subject property is what was being rezoned. Subsequently, we had a lot of contact with the residents once that sign went up, and once we noted that it was posted in the wrong property, we continued the P&amp;Z. We reposted the property, and we had a second citizen review meeting for this property. Now, out of the first, you have a petition before you that I included in your staff reports this evening. I think it would be pertinent to point out that the petition you have before you this evening was generated with the misinformation as far as what we were posting. The community clearly thought we were rezoning the land behind this. We had a second review meeting. We exceeded the 500-foot limit. We invited the 28 residents that were associated in this community, and we had a very good citizen review meeting the second time at St. Thomas Church. Out of that meeting, several issues presented themselves. The biggest issue that came out of that was that the community really had issues with access to this development off of 161st Avenue, which would be, again, along here. They wanted traffic coming down that road there. The second issue was that they wanted to be, they wanted to have some reassurance that this would have a residential character to it and that we wouldn't see something that didn't fit. And then they really expressed a desire to be included in the process, not just the zoning process, but the site review or the site plan review process as well. Containing the staff report that you have for you, we added several stipulations, and I would just direct your attention to eight, 24, and 25. And basically, we added those, the applicant certainly agreed to them, and we added those in there to provide a little reassurance for the neighbors of Wade Acres that we were hearing what they said. Subsequent to that, I'm happy to say that the Wade Acres Advisory Committee has been formed by the community members there in that neighborhood. Ms. Judy St. John is here this evening. She's the chairperson of that committee, and that's encouraging. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 07-1072, subject to the stipulations that are contained in your staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, can you clarify something pertinent to his specific presentation? You said stipulations eight, 24, and 25?
I believe that, yes, sir.
But I only see 24 stipulations in the ordinance. Did you mean 23 and 24?
I believe so. Give me one second. Yes, sir, 23 and 24.
I just wanted to say-
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, I do have three people that filled out speaker cards.
Okay, we're open for the public now to comment. Ask each person if they'd limit their comments to three minutes, please.
The first one is Vernon Rogers.
The reason I'm really here is because if I don't complain, I have no right to complain. It's just like voting. If you don't vote, you can't complain with what you get, so this is why I'm here. First of all, I understood the city of Goodyear wanted to keep the urban flair. You can tell, obviously, that they're not. When we went to the first meeting, I was told, and everybody there was told, if we was 100% against it, it was still going to be a go. That's not democracy, and that's not the way I think the city council believes it'll operate. When Mr. Williams gave it to the planning commission, I had the signatures there of over half the neighborhood, and that was just a start because, but when I was told that, I quit. There was no sense in getting names, it's not going to do me no good. And we went on, and after that, they went ahead and got the planning thing for the building, which, to me, you know, they already did this before we even decided to really do it, but it was already decided, so my main object is to let everybody know that the planning commission, when they said it was just a few signatures, that was over half the residents in that neighborhood. We just wanted to see the urban, you know, keep going, so that's my main objective of the whole thing.
You want the rural to continue?
We wanted, or we didn't want no more. We have a commercial situation along there, all along there now, and we didn't want a commercial. We wanted it just like it was before.
Okay, thank you.
And residential.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is Judy St. John.
Judy St. John, 831 North 161st Avenue, Goodyear. Mayor Kavanaugh and councilmembers, I speak this evening as the chairperson of the Wade Acres Advisory Committee. We've been formed to work with Mr. Neighbor as he proceeds with the development of the two plot acres at the northwest corner of Van Buren and 161st Avenue. Many of us did originally oppose the rezoning when the sign was mistakenly placed on the property that fronted 161st Avenue. In fact, many of those who have volunteered for this committee, and I do have the list here with names and emails if you would like them, did sign the original petition, but upon finding out the actual scope of the project and the proper placement of the sign, changed their minds. No, not one of us wants to see more commercial development. But in the same sense, that's Van Buren, and I don't think we're going to be able to stop Van Buren commercial development. I appreciate that Mr. Neighbor has agreed to allow us to be a part of this process. I have come, I walked my development. I didn't get to speak personally with everyone, but I spoke with the majority of them. They are for the project as long as it stays within the scope that Mr. Neighbor has proceeded. And I will continue to do my best to keep the neighbors informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last one is Dwayne Porter.
Hi, I am Dwayne Porter, and I live at 527 North 161st, and I am on the committee to work with Mr. Neighbor's office complex at 16102 West Van Buren. With his permission and others, this community, committee is working with residents to give him advice on building plans to blend in with the neighborhood and with concern of all the residents nearby. And we have met several times with his and our count, sorry, we have met several times, and his and our concerns are a lot the same. I recommend to the council that he be allowed to move forward with his project by allowing the rezoning. And I would like to thank all concerned for their input. Also, thanks to Mr. Williams, the planning and zoning for his assistance. We would like to keep all property on 161st Avenue and on Wade Lane, zoned AU, that's agricultural urban, and never rezoned to anything else, especially commercial. And it is very considerate for Mr. Neighbors to be very concerned about his impact on neighborhood, as Mr. Neighbors and his wife intend to build their home next to the office complex. And it will be great to see this area developed, because right now it's just more or less empty. And I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Neighbors for this opportunity, and thank you for the council letting me have this time to, opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to comment?
Mr. Mayor and councilpersons, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and do any of you have any questions of me?
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Pearl Neighbor, 13506 West Medlock Drive in Litchfield Park. My wife and I are soon going to be residents of Goodyear, and look forward to it. Do any of you have any questions?
We, if you just hang tight there, we'll get to that.
Okay, okay.
I don't know that we will.
Okay.
But, thank you. And do you have any comment?
Well, the only, I did a lot of research. The only thing that works along there and on Van Buren is commercial, and I did not want it to be anything other than CO, no other type of commercial. I want it so that it's, excuse me, professional offices, like doctor, chiropractic, dentist, and CPA, lawyers, and so forth. And so that's what I wanted it, and I want it to look nice, like the elevation that Mr. Williams shared with you. And I walked the neighborhood, I spoke to all of the neighbors in the neighborhood, and there was only one neighbor in the whole neighborhood that had any opposition the last time that I walked the neighborhood. And had that opportunity, and there's some wonderful neighbors, and look forward to living there. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the public? Okay, saying none, could I have a motion, please?
Mayor, we need to read the ordinance.
Okay.
Adopt ordinance 07-1072, providing for conditional rezoning of 2.02 acres of property from the agricultural urban zoning district to the commercial office zoning district for a development known as the Neighbor Office, generally located at the northwest corner of Van Buren Street and 161st Avenue, adopting supplementary zoning map number 06-024 to provide for the change in zoning, providing flexibility and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion, please? Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 07-1072, as read by the clerk. Second. Motion for Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Sousa. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What concerns me is the statement that Mr. Rogers made concerning staff that we all heard. And I'd like to ask Mr. Williams if that statement has bearing on the conversation that you know a lot.
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat the question?
The statement that Mr. Rogers made relative to a statement that was supposedly made by staff, that this is the way it's going to be, whether you like it or not, basically that's-
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Sousa, I believe he's referring to a comment that was made at a citizen review meeting before it had ever gone to P&amp;Z or anything, before it'd been heard in a public forum, so I don't know quite how to characterize that, because I don't remember the specifics of exactly what he's referring to, if-
Well, it seems, it would appear, excuse me, it would appear to me that staff is being dictatorial, or was being supposedly dictatorial about the statements as they were made, and that, to me, does not show our staff as being in good light, if that was actually the truth.
And I understand that. I don't know the full specifics of it, so it would be hard to comment on that. In front of P&amp;Z, he made the comment that I had referred to this as a slam dunk before it ever gone to a public process. Now, as far as, given the circumstances in which we're dealing with here and where we're going with this, I think that to characterize that before it ever made it to a public meeting would be inaccurate. So, you know, it's, certainly, we, you know, as we discuss things and we make our move towards that, it may have been referring to the public process, you know, is, you know, I just don't know how to answer that, except that if in any way, you know, I can fade from a city standpoint that, you know, that we, you know, guaranteeing that before it went through that type of process, then I would, you know, I would-
Well, if it, you know, if it was even insinuated that we were going to do or take this type of action, I mean, I don't think staff, if they ever did something like this, precludes what is going to occur in P&amp;Z and what's going to appear before this council, because we don't treat people that way in the city of Goodyear, as you know.
Absolutely.
And when I hear things like that, I take exception to it, and it causes me a great amount of concern.
And I do too, sir. You know, I would say as a representative of the city and a planner with the city of Goodyear, you know, my responsibility is to present the facts and nothing more. And if it came across in any other way in something that I portrayed, I would, A, I would clarify it immediately, and I would certainly apologize if that were the, you know, interpretation of anything that I said.
Mr. Coon, you were standing up. Would you like to comment in response to the question?
Mayor, Councilman Sousa, you know, just to follow up, you know, certainly, as Rick indicated, you know, if we said something in the process that conveyed that, we certainly apologize. The planners throughout the process are generally trained, we don't presume anything, as we know from our experience going through the process. Even when there is a case that's maybe purely obvious, we don't say so because of the process and the things that go through the planning commission and the city council. I will certainly convey, you know, take back to my staff, you know, your concerns and reinforce that, and certainly apologize, Mr. Rogers, if we somehow conveyed in that citizen meeting, which a lot of things are said, and I'm not sure who attributed to what, but certainly wasn't our intent, and it's not our practice to do so. And I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. Thank you, thank you.
One other question. Mr. Mayor, from me. This is the concept of what's going to be constructed in that area?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and turn on the screen.
Yeah. Well, it appears to me to be very, very compatible with residential areas.
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't look like it would infringe at all on the construction of homes in that particular area. So, I thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Coon.
Thank you. For the comment discussion, the council. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Appreciate the citizens coming in and speaking to us. Thank you very much. We'll now consider authorizing the sale of GO bonds. Larry Lang?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council. The Resolution 07-1151 before you this evening is the first step in the process to issue general obligation bonds for the cost related to certain projects. You'll notice that these projects include many projects that you're seeing either under construction now or have been completed. As an example, the very first one listed is the extension of Van Buren. This proposed bond sale was actually originally contemplated in the budget for the fiscal year that ended June 30 of 2006. However, we wanted to wait to go forward with the sale of the bonds until such time that the projects were sufficiently along in the process to make sure that the funds would be spent in a reasonable period of time. That is now this time, so the-
Do you have one that goes on elbow?
I have a partial list of the projects here that have been funded up here. These projects are all consistent with elections that voters of Goodyear have approved in the past. They are part of the financial plan that will keep the rate structure at the levels that, the property tax rates at the $1.60 that the city council has established by policy, and were an integral part of funding of those portion, those projects, as they were included in the capital improvement plan. Included in this bond is a $10 million financing, or $10 million for the stadium that was authorized specifically by the voters, and that is all that will be taken for general obligation bonds towards that stadium. Tonight with us, we also have Scott Ruby from Gus Rosenfeld, our bond counsel, and Larry Given from Peacock, Hislips, Daily and Given, our financial advisor, for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Can I ask the clerk to read the resolution?
Can I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only?
Adopt resolution 07-1151, ordering the sale of not to exceed $36,750,000 principal amount of City of Goodyear, Arizona, general obligation bonds, series 2007.
Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt and approve resolution 07-1151, so moved.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Souza, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Antoniak?
Just one question, when we looked at the CIP, did that assume these sales were being made when you made the calculations for the percentages in terms of reaching the cap on the 6% and the 20%?
That is correct. This has been programmed in all of our financial modeling.
Okay. When you come, would it be inappropriate to ask, or maybe I'd ask now, if you're going to come back June 18th with the sale of these bonds based on the bid that we received that day?
Yes, sir, we will be coming on June 18th with the specific bids that will give us the interest rate on these bonds at that time.
Would it be appropriate to ask about next steps? Because I know we're starting to reach the limitations on some of those, we talked about this during the budget, but maybe at that time we can get a brief review on what your planning, plan of action is as we go into the next several years, on going out to the voters again, and just having that discussion at that time?
Yes, we will include that on the agenda for that evening and go through that in depth with you.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
6-0 passes.
Okay, well, now, the next six items are concerned with baseball and the development and infrastructure agreements with Rose Properties. We'll start with, consider adopting a resolution approving the sports facility use agreement with the Cleveland Indians. Brian Delkey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once again, it's an absolute pleasure to be up here before you. We have several exciting things that we'll be sharing with council for your consideration tonight. If I could get Elmo, and I'd like to give council a brief overview of the several items that we're going to be hitting, and then I'll briefly discuss each one. There we go, thank you. Tonight, we actually have several agreements, and what we have is the use agreement that will be with the Cleveland Indians, the land conveyance that we'll be working on, or that we worked on getting the conveyance of the property over to the City of Goodyear from the Wood family and Rose Properties, the infrastructure agreement, which is causes the water, sewer, roads, all the infrastructure necessary to construct and have ready for, obviously, the spring training campus, development agreement associated with the zoning, the zoning itself, and then finally, a notice of intent regarding the sales tax. And what I'm going to do is summarize those, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, because we have about three inches worth of documents that we're working from, and we decided that it'd be best to summarize those. Do have several folks here that can provide additional background if you have specific questions that we can rely on as well. For the public, just once again, the location of the facilities we're talking about in the bottom center of the screen, on the two green parcels, known as the Wood family, or Wood families owned it for a number of years, and those are the two locations where we'll be having both the spring training development facility for the Indians as well as the ballpark. So, that's generally south of I-10, about two miles on Estrella Parkway, just west of, or east, west of the airport. And before we actually get into the quick summary of the agreements, do want to stop and always acknowledge the efforts of many behind the scenes. It certainly starts with the mayor, with your leadership, Mr. Mayor, it's served us well, and very much appreciate that, and certainly the support that we've received from council over the last several months. We've also, the Wood family, they're here in numbers tonight, and it's great to have them here, without them, we wouldn't be here. Rose Properties and consultants that we're working with and with the Wood family on the development, Cleveland Indians, and certainly it's our pleasure tonight to have Mr. Paul Dolan, president of the Cleveland Indians, that will be standing up here in a few minutes before you, Eric Judson, Casey Rank of JMI Sports, and Gus Rosenfeld, we have three of their attorneys here, several of, all three of which worked on various agreements throughout this process. And then the city project team's been in front of you several times, but we've had additional people that have worked behind the scenes as well, and that's Mr. Bob Coons, Harvey Kraus, Larry Lang, Dean Kokenauer on the insurance and risk issues, and Brian Barnes, who is, of course, with Parks and Recreation and Public Works, and those individuals have really helped in the last several weeks. And certainly the existing team, Cato Escavell, Sarah Chilton, Karen Craver, Raul Varela, Kim Benan, Regis Reed. So, again, lots of work with a lot of people throughout this process. So, the first item, the use agreement. Without the use agreement, we absolutely would not be here. And the use agreement is with the Cleveland Indians, and as you'll notice in the remarks, or actually up on the screen, the several provisions that are within this use agreement. And first and foremost, it is a 20-year agreement with the Indians with two five-year options that they have after it would expire. The city will own and manage a facility. The design is comparable to others throughout the metro Phoenix area as it relates to what the STA Sports and Tourism Authority allows for spring training campuses. It allocates the rights between the Indians and the city regarding revenue and facilities uses. And what that means, just very briefly, the revenues are the gate receipts, and these are all very typical of spring training campuses throughout metro Phoenix. The Cleveland Indians would receive 80% of the gate receipts, the City of Goodyear 20%. For most of the rest of the items, it's a 50-50 split. That would be for concessions, novelties, programs, advertising, parking, and so those would all be split 50-50 on those revenues. The naming rights, and let's not get our, get too excited about this, but naming rights, the city would get 100%, but I'm here to tell you that I don't believe any of the spring training campuses in metro Phoenix have any names to them, so those cities have not derived revenues as of yet. Maybe we can change that, and that's a great opportunity for us to consider, but we would get 100% of those revenues. Lastly, or a couple of other things, it does provide, if we want to go out and get a nonprofit sponsoring organization, to like cart cars, take tickets, those types of things, it allows for that provision. And the Indians themselves will receive 400 complimentary tickets for each of the games, and for those that aren't used, they're given back that morning so we can turn around and sell those. Keep in mind that the Indians are very interested in the ticket revenues, and they would absolutely work with us on that. But it's very comparable to what other teams have done throughout the metro Phoenix area. We are going to have a ticket surcharge that that will go to the city. Our goal is, is to have $150,000 per year that goes to a capital replacement fund, so we don't have to come back each budget year and look for trying to get additional monies to replace plastic seats and things that we need at the stadium. So, that will be a fund that we get to work with, and that, those surcharges are the cities. The Cleveland Indians will be paying $100,000 in rent per year, and that's, so that is their lease rate for the 20-year period. And finally, we are, meaning the Cleveland Indians and the City of Goodyear, very desirous of a second team, and the use agreement does spell that out, how things may change if, in fact, that we get a second team, and how that use, this use agreement could change. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's a summary. I would also say that we have Mr. Keith Hoskins with Gus Rosenfeld, who has worked on the use agreement and can answer any other questions you may have. And if you're done with questions, me, I'd also invite Mr. Paul Dolan up to say a few remarks as well.
Yes. Mr. Dolan, welcome. Yes, sir.
Well, hello, it's good to be back. I was hoping I could stand before you tonight and introduce myself as a representative of your first place Cleveland Indians, but last I checked, the Boston Red Sox weren't cooperating with it. However, it was only the top of the seventh last time I looked, so there was still, there's still hope. But there's clearly a great deal of excitement about our ball club up in Cleveland, and we look forward to the day when that excitement extends to Goodyear, Arizona. My role is really very simple tonight, and that is one to express our delight at the progress that this project has taken. It has moved along very well, and to that end, I want to congratulate all those involved in this process. I think you could, you could say, given the things that have been achieved to this date, that it was inevitable that we would get to this point where use agreement would be prepared to be approved. And if that is so, it is only so because a great deal of hard work was put in by a lot of people, on the Indian side and on the city side, and I want to congratulate them and thank them for that. But if it was inevitable, it was not inevitable, though, they would get the work done in the spirit of goodwill that has permeated this project from the beginning. Sometimes these things can unravel as the work gets done, and to the contrary, the relationship between the Cleveland Indians and the City of Goodyear continues to thrive, and we look forward to it growing and growing as we become citizens of the City of Goodyear for, I heard Brian said, at least we have 30 years at least to do that, and we can work on more. So, thank you very much, and look forward to your action tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Further comments on the public, on the MOU? Could I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please?
Adopt resolution 07-1152, approving a sports facilities use agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Cleveland Indians Baseball Company Limited Partnership regarding the use of Cactus League baseball facilities.
Okay, thank you. Motion, please?
I move to adopt resolution 07-1152, as read by the clerk.
Second, last second. Motion from Councilmember Holland, a second from Councilmember Antoniak, it's open for discussion or comment. Vice Mayor? On the practice field, how would that be set up on the practice fields? Will they all be available to us in the off-season, to the city? And are those practice fields lighted? But if they aren't lighted, should they be?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavalier, or Vice Mayor Cavalier, the practice facilities is, we've already been working through the programming elements of that. During spring training, the Cleveland Indians will have use of the entire area, and then in the off-season, if you will, and the season's about six weeks for spring training. In the off-season, the Cleveland Indians plan on a year-round home here. They would have their clubhouse, they would also have two and a half of the practice fields, as well as the agility field. That will be on the northern part of their, of the campus. The southern part, where the four, four other fields are, the city would have use of those. And in addition to that, we will have parking that's nearby, we're looking at having restrooms and concessions as well, too. And it's been truly a spirit of partnership how we actually divvy up or plan for the site to be used by both parties in the off-season. Relating to lights, there is an interest in having lights. Eric Judson, at this point, are we, what's the status of lights? Lights are not currently budgeted, but we will be looking at it as we go through design and costing as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Should I follow up on that, because I, we talked about this today, I thought the concept had two lighted practice fields.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Eric Judson with Goodyear Baseball Partners with Rose Properties. The standard in spring training in the Cactus League is to have, of course, the major league ball field, the main field, be lighted, and one practice facility lighted, and that is certainly the case. The Cloverleaf, the four fields to the south, currently do not have that, and that's consistent with other fields. We are certainly going to price that, and we are going to include that as an option for the city to consider, but the STA will not fund additional lights. They will only fund that one practice facility, and then the lights for the main ball field.
So, one field is lit?
Correct.
Right, correct. If we could have that information, and if the city would like to look into that, because if we have, if we want to use that for Little League, it'll be nice.
Sure. Throughout the process, we will be providing a significant dialogue with you to give you plenty of opportunity, not only to see the progress of the facilities, to comment and get involved in design layout and so forth, but also for budgeting reasons, if there's something, and we call it an add alternate, that you would like to consider, we will price that. We've got a great scene at risk team, a design team, that will look at anything, in fact, that you would like to include in the facility for you to consider and then make the appropriate determination, of course. What we are presenting to you currently as part of the use agreement is really consistent with what the Sports and Tourism Authority will be reimbursing us for.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, you said that the sharing, the 80/20 and the 50/50 are standard in most contract, Cactus League contracts, is that true?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Souza, that's absolutely correct. We're consistent with what the other cities are doing in terms of revenue sharing.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Osborne?
Okay, don't shoot me for asking this question, but how many seats are there, again, in this facility? That you're giving 400 tickets away, or 400 seats away, how many are there altogether?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, there will be 8,000 fixed seats in the stadium, in the ballpark, and there will be about two, right around 2,000 seats for berm seating. Additionally, there will be some, I think some, call them party decks, I'll call them congregation decks, but it could actually perhaps add to that number, but 8,000 are fixed seats, yes.
Okay, and then on those, and so just clarifying what you stated, then of those ticket sales, it's a 50-50 split, is that correct? Did you say that, or did I not get that right?
80/20 on the tickets.
80/20, that's, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Souza?
I'm sorry, you asked about the 400 seats. It's not for the Cleveland Indians just to use on their own, that's for visiting team, all the families, the umpires, I mean, that's the major league baseball allotment that's included there.
Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to the side, Mr. Dolan, I've been watching the summaries every day. That's an ex White Sox fan, converted Cleveland Indians fan. I want to thank the team for the progress they're making in your division.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just, okay, before we go to the next subject, you know, this is a facility that taxpayers are basically buying and they're owning, and our city staff's going to have access to seats, and we're going to be controlling suites, and Cleveland's getting two of those, and if we have a second team, thank you for instructing me on the fact that that other team would get two also, but there would still be four remaining for city deliberation as to how those would be used. I think it's imperative that we be squeaky clean and beyond reproach on the use of these tickets and suites. And there should, if there is any question, the buck stops with us from the public on the use of those suites. So, I would suggest that instead of you bringing something to us, that we have a committee set up of three councilmen, members, and three staff, and we deliberate on what will be the policy on suites, and then have that same group or some similar group be available to work that issue each season, as we progress through the season for the allocation of these suites. We just do not want any question about how we do that sort of thing. So, if we could do that, okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
6-0 passes.
And Mr. Dolan, welcome back, and your comments about us being very gracious to work with are mirrored on how we feel about you. So, you're a great partner, and we relish the opportunities that we're going to face over the next 30 years.
I'd like to say something further. And I appreciate the letter that your mother sent us. Really, it was beautiful. Thank her for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first and foremost... This is great. This is truly exciting. So, by virtue of the fact that this agreement was just passed, a use agreement, we can continue on with the agenda, because otherwise I'd probably be sitting down about right now. But the, the next item is a land conveyance, and one of the things, and we spent a fair amount of time over the last several months in trying to work this out, we also had an opportunity to visit with council on May the 2nd in a work session to talk about the concepts behind land conveyance. And as you'll notice, when, when we went out many months ago, we were asking for about, right out of 120 acres for a two-team complex, 75 for a one-team. What we have in front of you right now is conveyance of about 88 acres, and what's happening is that that will be initially conveyed. This agreement provides for how we end up conveying some of the excess properties back to Rose and Wood Family for development. But the value of the initial conveyance, and we value it at $5.74 a square foot, that is based on pretty much a comparative study that was done by a commercial broker that valued the property anywhere from about $450 all the way up to $9 a square foot. So we know it's the bottom end of that range. So, in total, it's almost $22 million in conveyance, and the city will be paying $6.25 million for that, for that initial conveyance to us. So, as you can see, it's a, obviously, we're getting it at a well below market, it's a little over $6 million. But the important part of this agreement is that there will be reconveyance. We are getting additional property for now, for example, for parking, and we know that once the designs come through from HOK, they're going to, we have an envelope from which to work, and as we work through that envelope, we're going to find exactly how much parking, which parcels, those types of things. So, very appreciative of the Wood Family and Rose Properties to really convey excess right now until we get to shrink it down to what we actually need. We are required to have 3,000 parking spots, as per the Sports and Tourism Authority. So, with that, we will be conveying it down. We'll keep that at 75 acres for the short term, and over long term, as we go from surface parking to structured parking, conveyance will, further conveyance will be given back to the developer. Our goal is to create an urban village. Our goal is to have structured parking and not have seas of surface parking. The other is, is the option for the purchase of additional land. That's for 50 acres for the second team. You'll see that on the south part of the map in front of you, and that will be, it's over a two-year period from when we did the MOU, so we have two years from which to exercise that option, and that will be $3.75 million for that additional 50 acres.
Did you say two years?
Yes, and that was as of the use agreement that we had in place, I believe, as March the 7th, or the MOU, excuse me. And the city will take ownership of this entire acreage on June 22nd of 2007, so scant three weeks from now, we'll be owning this property. Also have here tonight, Mr. Frank Tompkins with Gess Rosenfeld, who has done an incredible effort in a short amount of time in working with Rose Properties and the Wood Family to get us here. So if you have questions I can't answer, either Frank Tompkins or Scott Ruby with Gess Rosenfeld are here.
Okay, thank you.
You're back.
Comments from the public? I see none.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the land conveyance agreement between the City of Goodyear and Wood Family Enterprises Limited Partnership, Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC, Swansea Properties LLC, and Rose Properties Southwest LLC for the purchase and conveyance of various parcels of land necessary for the Goodyear Spring Training Complex.
Second motion?
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Sousa, open for discussion. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, on that two-year limitation, I thought it was three. I thought someone told me we had three years. Well, maybe it's, maybe I'm misunderstanding this.
We talked three years, but we ended up with two.
Okay, we, so we have two years to have another team come in to join us. Beyond that, it's out of reach at that point. Is that what you're, is that what this is saying?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's absolutely correct. That's our option period. If we go past that time, then there'd have to be further negotiations to acquire that property, but it would go past our option period. So we do have two years from when we had the memo of understanding.
And two years from?
And I believe that was March 7th.
From March, March 7th.
7th of this year.
Doesn't rule out a second team after two years. It just rules out us getting that land for that price.
Right.
I see, that's all.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did forget to notice one other thing in the conveyance agreement, there is a provision, and this will be tied to the sales tax reimbursement agreement, that on this land conveyance, if the sales tax reimbursement, and I'll talk about that, a couple items later in the agenda, if the sales tax reimbursement does not go forward, the land conveyance stops as well, and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. But that is a provision in this, this conveyance agreement, so this, this is really a bundled set of agreements.
Okay, for good discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, six-zero. We'll now move to the infrastructure agreement.
The infrastructure agreement that we're asking council to consider tonight is extremely important to consider how we phase this, how we fund it, and we worked through very closely with Rose Properties and their engineering firm to determine exactly when, where, how the infrastructure is going to be installed. Now, part of the infrastructure agreement, it does provide that we get the right-of-way conveyed to us, so you'll see that at no cost to the city. The infrastructure will be constructed by Rose Properties Southwest, and they will be actually managing the engineering firm, they'll be managing the contracts on behalf of the city, and we're going to break this up into really three phases. The phases align themselves pretty well with the development of the project itself. The training development complex, which is at the southern parcel, which will be used by the Cleveland Indians in August of 2008, those roads in and around that area will be constructed first. That's Bullard Avenue, which will be a four-lane arterial, and that goes from the northern limits to the proposed practice fields and all the way to Estrella Parkway, south along that alignment by the M Cement Plant. There'll be construction of a three-lane miner collector extending from Goodyear Boulevard east to the proposed ballpark extending south and connecting to Estrella Parkway to the lower Buckeye Road alignment, and then improvements to Lower Buckeye Parkway. So, we are looking at making sure that we can get traffic in and out of the training complex. Again, that's not just for use by the Cleveland Indians, that will be used by our public in the off-season. So, really, in August, we'll be having use of those facilities on the southern, on the Cloverleaf portion of, of the training complex. There will be additional development, as you'll see the color codes there in blue, that'll be the second phase, and that will be the area that services the ballpark itself. And then finally, the third phase is that green line that you see in front of you on Estrella Parkway. That is tied to development, that is tied to, when 60% of the property that fronts Estrella Parkway, when they reach that threshold, that's when that stretch of roadway will have to be improved. But we also have water lines, sewer lines, we'll have electric conduits, we have to make sure that we have this with telecommunications, natural gas, all those things will be included in this. Right now, we're estimating the costs, the engineers are estimating this at around $19 million. All along, the city's commitment to infrastructure was $10 million. The remaining amount, and again, we have to, we'll get the engineers' estimates in for these, these roadways and infrastructure that we've talked about, but we will be requiring a letter of credit from Rose Properties for the balance of that infrastructure. That's the surety that the city has to make sure that the entire, this infrastructure gets constructed. So, with that, I have Mr. Scott Ruby, who has worked tirelessly in the infrastructure agreement with Mr. John Rogiri and members of the proper, Rose Properties Southwest.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Hey, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I hope the council approved the infrastructure development agreement between the City of Goodyear and Rose Properties Southwest LLC, the Wood Family Enterprises Limited Partnership, Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC, and Swansea Properties LLC to finalize the developer's responsibilities in connection with the construction and delivery of the necessary infrastructure for the Goodyear Spring Training Complex, Ballpark Village, and Wood Corporate Campus. I so move.
Second motion from Councilmember Sousa, and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier, open for discussion on council. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, six-zero. We'll move now to adopt the resolution approving a development agreement for Wood Corporate Campus.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you're stuck with me one more time, or actually two more, I guess, this one. This is a development agreement, but it's tied to the zoning. I'll be covering the development agreement, and then after council considers this for action, Mr. Bob Coons will, will be discussing the zoning part of this, so that's how we'll break this up. But the development agreement is, you'll note in there, the term is for 20 years. That coincides with the same length of term that we have with the Indians' use agreement, so we try to stay consistent. It's also tied to the infrastructure agreement. We have many moving parts on this, many interrelations, interconnectivity, if you will, so infrastructure agreement's tied to that as well. Extinguishment of water rights, that will be within 30 days, and we're still working through, through some of those issues, and we'll be getting there very quickly. It's just a matter of, we have 30 days to finish that transaction. Bullard Avenue Bridge, one of the things that's, I wouldn't say unique about this project, but with the Bullard Avenue Road Alignment, it will be coming now through Bullard Wash at a, at an angle that now increases the bridge span of that particular bridge over Bullard Wash. So what we've agreed to do is, we've considered that being at about $1.5 million in additional cost, so we are really splitting that 50/50 with Rose Properties. City will be funding $750,000, and Rose Properties will be funding $750,000, and that, we think, is very equitable, given the fact that we'll have 75 acres of our land adjacent to this. Rose will also be providing $5 million in, in what I call enhancements or amenities that will be around the ballpark. This won't be in the southern part where the training complex is, but it will be is around the ballpark, just to enhance the experience. Could be everything from hardscape to landscape to fountains to art, we're not sure yet, but there is a commitment, a requirement, that there will be $5 million invested by Rose in the ballpark. And then finally, minimum of 2,200 of the 3,000 parking places will be in the north parcel. The reason is, is the ballpark will be used 15 games a year with the Cleveland Indians, but we'll have a great opportunity to use it for the public year-round. So we want to make sure we have parking proxement to that, and we worked on doing that. So, we will have 2,200 parking spots next to the ballpark. And finally, in the last one, I do not, I will not be getting into detail on this, but the private shared parking provisions and transitions, that'll be part of Mr. Bob Coons' presentation. He has worked closely with Rose Properties to, to work through that. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to comment? Could I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 07-1153, approving a development agreement with Rose Properties Southwest LLC, Wood Family Enterprises Limited Partnership, Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC, and Swansea Properties LLC to facilitate the development of Ballpark Village and Wood Corporate Campus, a mixed-use development generally located on the east side of Estrella Parkway from approximately 1/4 mile north of Goodyear Boulevard, south on the north to the planned Bullard Avenue extension of Elwood Street on the south, within the City of Goodyear, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion on the resolution?
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier, second from Councilmember Antoniak, open for discussion. Councilmember Antoniak?
What kind of water rights do we anticipate?
Mr. Dave Wawanski is our water expert. Do you want to take that question?
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, this property has irrigation grandfather rights, and we are in discussion with, with the principals in terms of valuing the various water rights. If you extinguished all the grandfather rights today, there's approximately 1,600 acre-feet of, of rights that the city could acquire. There are no type 1s or type 2 rights that we're aware of.
And I was going to ask a question about the water rights also, David. I wasn't sure, I mean, have we already assured that water supply? I mean, we have that one.
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, we do have the designation of assured water supply for 100 years. This, this development is located within our city service area. We do have a legal right to serve, and we have both the legal authority and the physical availability to provide all the water and wastewater services for this project.
And the capacity and everything is there? I guess that's what I was.
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, obviously, the infrastructure capacity is something that our engineering folks and our water resource department have worked closely on to ensure.
Vice Mayor?
I don't know why I should have asked this in the last one, but for my own curiosity, and this is part of an amendment, the electric line going down Estrella Parkway, will that be buried?
Mayor, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure. I would have to check with Arizona Public Service or if somebody else knows. I'm, I'm, I just don't know.
Mr. Varela?
Maybe you know.
The electrical line down Estrella Parkway will not be buried. The, the poles at the Elwood Alignment will be widened a bit to allow for the Bullard Construction, but that's all the electrical work we're doing at this time.
About 500 KV, is that why?
I believe it's a 16 KV.
I'll have to ask, we just... 16?
12 KV, I'm sorry.
It will be buried.
It will be buried? Now, it will be buried once development occurs along Estrella, correct?
Oh, okay.
But not as part of the initial process.
Because 12 KV could be buried.
Right.
All right, so it will be buried then? Ultimately, yes.
Good question.
Okay. Did you have a further question about the water?
Okay. Regarding the water rights, David?
Are we talking about wells that are on the property at the present time?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, there is an existing well that the city is using pursuant to its service area right. Again, that's, that's going to be part of the negotiations as to how we finalize water rights and transfer water rights to the city.
One way or the other, will water rate, whatever arrangements we make, we're going to get credit for that, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, whatever valuation negotiation takes place, either there's value to the developer against development fees.
Go ahead.
We get the opportunity to, for the physical availability of the water and the water credits to put into our portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe I do have a, this question happens to be for Sean. I see him lurking through the doorway there. Yeah. This just has to do with the plant capacity that we have for the wastewater treatment, and we're prepared for all the extra wastewater that's going to be coming in through the plant. Our plant can handle that.
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, we're currently, as we talked a few weeks ago, completing our master plan from Blacken Beach, which will help size the facility based off of the current land use. We have incorporated the conceptual land uses associated with Baseball Village and the Wood Corporate Campus into that model, so that, that will ensure us the ability to expand the plant as it's needed. We would have to evaluate at the time of construction, available capacity, but at this point, we do not anticipate having an issue servicing. Given, given the demands that that facility will generate, we don't, we don't anticipate a problem.
Okay.
And a master plan will be completed in August, so if we see anything at that point, we'll have plenty of time to react.
Hold on, good. That sounds a good answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Six-zero passes.
Now consider adopting a resolution to rezone the 244 acres. Mr. Coons? Mr. Coons?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request to rezone the approximately 242 acres from the existing zoning of agriculture to planned area development. The development is comprised of two parcels, the northern 57 acres, which we have entitled Ballpark Village, and the southern acreage, which is the Wood Corporate Campus. The request is to facilitate the development of the spring training baseball facilities for the Cleveland Indians and a potential second Cactus League team, together with the private development of commercial, light industrial, business, and office park, and residential land uses in the Wood Corporate Campus and Ballpark Village. The PAD contains a development plan depicting development subareas, conceptual illustrative development plans for each subarea, a circulation plan, defined development standards, and dimension requirements to guide the future development of the property. This is very similar to all other PADs that we bring before you. Also included with the application of design guidelines with the PAD, design guidelines establish the minimum site development standards for building architecture, landscape architecture for each land use within the development. The northern 57 acres of the development, Ballpark Village, is planned for mixed-use development and the spring training baseball stadium. The mixed-use development subarea, that's entitled MXD, that surrounds the stadium, will permit a mix of land uses, including retail, restaurants, entertainment, office buildings, 400 hotel rooms, and 541 multifamily residential units. The multifamily residential units within the MXD area will be located either above ground floor retail or office space, or within a separate multifamily structure in the southeast corner of the Ballpark Village. The southern 185 acres, of the development, is known as Wood Corporate Campus. It is planned for a mix of land uses, including the spring training practice facilities, and clubhouse and fields, business office park with a combination of flex industrial or low office development, as well as mid-high intensity office buildings and retail support services. Those are all within this gray area that's entitled Business Office Park. The Business Office Park subarea is intended to provide a wide variety of employment opportunities in an attractive urban campus environment. The land uses in this area will include light manufacturing, electronic product and components manufacturing, computer and high-technology industries, as well as provide an environment for attracting small, medium, and large corporate users. But it also provides for the availability of flex industrial office space. The commercial subarea at the corner of Elwood and Estrella Boulevard is planned as a neighborhood commercial parcel, with typical neighborhood retail commercial uses. And finally, the other land use within the Wood Corporate Campus is a small piece of light industrial, 3.2 acres, that is isolated for the majority of the development by Bullard Avenue. The light industrial land use is planned for very limited light industrial uses and only uses that are compatible with airport operations. The PAD also contains an alternative development plans for the additional spring training and the second baseball team. There are two PA plans, development plans within the PAD, one showing a public facilities district for the initial team. It provides the option for the second team in the lower PFD area. As Brian indicated earlier, there's a two-year time period, after which, if the second team does not occur, then the development option is for flex low industrial, flex office space within that area. The PAD also contains illustrative development plans for both Ballpark Village and Wood Corporate Campus that depict the conceptual building layouts, parking layouts, and design concept for the Ballpark Village and the urban village that you've been described The illustrated site plan for the lower acreage for the two-team concept, and for the Wood Corporate Campus with the one-team concept, with the baseball, spring training facilities, the business office park, and the commercial development on the corner. The Wood Corporate Campus and Ballpark Village PAD is consistent with the existing light industrial, general industrial and commercial land use designations in the general plan. The development of the property has a planned mixed-use business and office park, and baseball training facilities will be compatible with adjacent properties in the immediate area that are also zoned or planned for similar business and office park use. The section of the MXD area in the Ballpark Village north of Goodyear Boulevard, south, is consistent with the City Center Pacific Area Plan, which designates the southeast district of the city center area as being appropriate for business park development. And the urban development character envisioned by the Ballpark Village in the PAD and the design guidelines is consistent with the objectives of the City Center Pacific Area Onto a subject of parking. The Wood Corporate Campus PAD includes a shared parking model used to determine the amount of parking required for the private development of the mixed uses in Ballpark Village, and this only relates to Ballpark Village, the northern portion. Shared parking is the use of a parking space to serve one, two, or more uses without conflict. In urban environments with mixed uses that have uses that occupy, that operate and have parking demands at different hours of the day, or different days of the week, or different seasons of the year, there is also always an opportunity to look at and evaluate whether or not those individual uses can share an individual parking space, based upon the differences of the use and their occupancy and their business. There are a wide variety of shared parking models that are used in city zoning ordinances throughout the country, including locally in Scottsdale, Phoenix, Tempe. Goodyear does not have a particular shared parking model within a zoning ordinance. The City Center Pacific Area Plan supports the concept of shared parking model in an urban environment. In this particular case, the applicant is proposing within this PAD a shared parking model for the private mixed-use development within Ballpark Village. That shared parking proposal within the PAD basically results in the reduction of 14% of the required parking spaces. So that which would normally be required by the zoning ordinance, by use of the shared parking model, we can reduce their parking demand, or what we require on the site, by 14%. We want to note that shared parking models typically have parking reductions up to and more than 25% on a regular basis in many particular environments, particularly the urban environments where you have mixed-use developments. The PAD also permits the development in Ballpark Village to use on-street parking in the streets within Ballpark Village to count toward their required parking for private development. This is not something we normally do within our zoning ordinance and our development. Staff is supportive of both these proposals for shared parking model in Ballpark Village and the use of on-street parking in this particular instance. We believe that there is the likelihood or availability to utilize shared parking, and to give them credit for the on-street parking spaces, we also believe will not create a parking problem either for the businesses within the mixed-use development or the That is relative to a shared parking model for the private development, and again, staff supports that, and it is included in the PAD, which we support. As Brian alluded, there is a, applicant has also requested, within the PAD, some consideration for further shared parking, where the private development may utilize, to some degree, the public spaces that are being provided on the site for the state, for the ballpark, whether or not it's baseball or public events. On the premise that in a build-out, there'll be 3,000 parking spaces, as you heard Brian indicate, for the stadium provided in structures on the Ballpark Village, and that absent the spring training, baseball games, and most significant major events, those parking spaces would be vacant, and that there may be some consideration for use of those vacant parking spaces for the private development. Staff supports the concept of that in other environments, in downtowns, that that is a potential, and we certainly don't want 2,000 parking spaces to be left unused except for, you know, 15, 20 times a year, and that, but also want to ensure that there's always available parking for, obviously, the baseball, as well as the city events at the stadium. In the PAD, the applicant approaches that subject of a shared public and private parking model. We have some concerns regards to how much that would be. We believe that there is a potential for that. We have included two stipulations in the PAD in that regard. One, and this is also within the development agreement that was just mentioned to you, at the initial development, staff has concurred that we will allow 20% of the paid parking spaces, 200 spaces in Ballpark Village that get constructed, to be initially counted toward the private development parking requirements. Beyond that, we have concerns about allowing any additional shared public and private spaces, and we've agreed with the applicant that with their, under their dollars and our administration of, we will conduct a study by a recognized consultant firm of other areas within the country, San Diego, other metropolitan areas where there are ongoing today, experience regards to sharing public and private spaces. That would be coming back at some future date. If the city staff and the council agree that there is potential to do that, then we could enter an agreement to provide that in the future, but at the current time, that would not be the case, other than the 200 spaces. In summary, the staff has recommended approval of the requested PAD zoning, subject to the 32 stipulations included in the ordinance. Stipulations 25 through 29 are the ones particularly related to parking. They basically say, in Ballpark Village, the parking must meet the standards, or the standards except as noted in the PAD for the private shared parking model. All the parking in Wood Corporate Campus must meet city standards. 20% of the 1,000 paid parking spaces initially developed in Ballpark Village can be utilized to account toward private development. Number 28, the use of any city parking within Ballpark Village for spring training games and public events at the ballpark shall take priority over any private development parking. And number 29, we've included the stipulation, as we have with others, we're departing somewhat with the city's traditional standards for parking and required parking, and this stipulation basically requires that the owner developer provide a notice to all future purchases of land within Ballpark Village, that there is a shared parking model within this development, and providing them notification of the shared parking model, and that there may be shortage of business parking at times, in the worst-case basis. Mayor, Council, concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Opportunity for comment from the public? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Ruggieri, President of Rose Properties, Southwest. Wow, we got here. I want to congratulate all of you for this moment. We've been working at this for three years together, and today's a great day as a result of all the work that we've put into it. I want to not only congratulate you, but thank you. Thank you for, Mr. Mayor, especially you, the vision of having Major League Baseball here, of staying the course after some bumps in the roads early on in the process, having the belief and the trust in the Wood Family and Rose Properties Southwest in being able to deliver this for the community. It's a great honor and a great opportunity for us. I also want to thank the Wood Family. The three, Margaret Canyon and I believe Pug, are represented here tonight. It took a lot on their part. This is very precious to them, this property. It's been in their family for generations, and when I initially came to them and said, "Would you consider a ballpark here?", and had to work through that issue, because it's not always apparent that when you take something out of, you know, an office or residential and you make a ballpark out of it, how all of that works. I also want to thank staff. Staff did a great job, all the way, top to bottom, on this. I especially want to identify Brian. Without Brian, I don't know if we'd be here tonight. Your staff is reasonable in the negotiation, and I want to compliment them publicly, because they've done a great job. This is a very, very complicated project. It has been an arduous and complicated set of negotiations. It was always done with trust in each other, I can't say that enough, because we all had a common goal, and even when we hit a challenge, we worked around it, and we've brought it to a successful conclusion. So tonight represents a watershed of all of the work that all of us have put together for two to three years on the project. And as a result of that, we've done some very, very special things here. As I said, this is not a typical project. I always like to say that you build success going in, rather than taking it on the way out, and we've done that. This concept that we've been able to coalesce around and negotiate through has created a framework of success for us that will pay dividends over the decades to come. We are, the reason why I say that is because what we're doing is like nothing that anybody has done before. One of the reasons why we're able to do that is because of our partner, Eric Judson from JMI Sports. Eric has the knowledge and the experience from his experience in San Diego to have put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this, and we have created an opportunity to create a ballpark in an urban village like no other. And although we don't see it here today, we will start to see that occur here shortly in construction at the end of this year, and completion here within a couple of years. But just as important as the ballpark is, and the practice facilities, the way we are stitching that facility, together with the private development, is truly unique. Over the course of the next few months, we are not only progressing on the design of the stadium, or I should say, the main playing field and the practice facilities, but we are progressing on all the strategic planning, the teneting, and the integration of the private facilities with the ballpark in such the private facilities with the ballpark in such a way that when we enter into the site, we have a uniquely different sensation that's different than anything else in the marketplace. And it's an exciting process and I know that I am very, very excited about it and looking forward to doing that. So out of respect for you, I know that you have a big agenda and we're just the tip of the iceberg tonight. I'll conclude my remarks by once again saying how proud I am to be here. Thank you for the opportunity of doing that. And I really look forward, we're at the very beginning of our partnership and look forward to working with you for years and decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Ask the clerk to read a resolution by title only, please.
Adopt Ordinance 07-1073, providing for conditional rezoning of 242 acres located on the east side of Estrella Parkway from approximately one-quarter mile north of Goodyear Boulevard, south on the north, to the planned Bullard Avenue extension of Elwood Street on the south, from the agricultural zoning district to the final planned area development zoning district for a mixed-use development known as Wood Corporate Campus and Ballpark Village, adopting supplementary zoning map number 05-231 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Call for motion?
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Sousa and a second from Councilmember Antoniak to approve the resolution. Open for discussion. Comment. Councilmember Sousa, then.
Mr. Coons? I have two questions regarding parking, okay? We talked about off-street, on-street, on-street parking. We have parking on both sides of the street during game day. And are the streets wide enough to accommodate that type of relationship? Mayor, Councilman Sousa, the on-street parking that's referenced is along the east side and generally within these streets. An answer to your question is, is that I believe that in all of those occasions, there is on-street parking on both sides. And the project team has gone through that on numerous occasions to ensure that the on-street parking in the width of the street is adequate.
How many lanes of Rosewood are there?
I believe there is one lane in each direction on the road.
Mayor Council, there's two lanes within the urban corridor or the urban streets. That's the east-west here and the north-south. And there's three lanes along the Wood Boulevard cross-section. So there's two drive lanes and one left turn lane.
So as an engineer, you don't see any problem with creating a traffic jam through the facility at all?
Well, from the engineering standpoint, we've done a couple of things. We've looked at the width, as you noted, and we also looked at various common devices. For example, street bumpouts, additional landscaping along the sides of the street, as well as reduced speed limits. Within this corridor or within this complex, the speed limit, posted speed limit would be 15 miles per hour, 1.5. And along Wood Boulevard, it's approximately, I believe it's 25 miles per hour.
Thank you very much, Brian.
House Member Holland?
One more question. Can I go to her? No, I'll come back.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Coons? Under the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and of course, we have a lot of Phoenix Goodyear folks here tonight, it talks about the multifamily residential development and also the light industrial development. And I'm just concerned because we already get a lot of complaints about Lufthansa and a lot of the work that they do there and the noise that goes on all during the night. And I was just wondering, I mean, if we're seriously thinking of putting multifamilies there, how are we going to handle the same types of issues? I mean, we're already having to deal with them. And I guess they'll be coming. So I assume that you guys have all talked about this and...
Mayor Councilman Holland, maybe as a point of reference, again, in Ballpark Village, this is where the multifamily would be. And again, it's a combination of multifamily above ground floor retail or office and then the one multifamily within the southeast quadrant of Ballpark Village that will actually be developed in conjunction with a parking structure. This diagram illustrates the noise contours from the Phoenix Goodyear Airport. And this is the 60 LDN line. So we believe that it is significantly outside the noise contour, you know, to permit this type of residential development.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the issues that we have with Lufthansa, is that the right way to say it, are closer in with the residential people. They said it's the planes flying over and it's the noise and it's all during the night. And so that was my concern.
I'd have to defer to someone else because I'm not familiar with the current issue
We as staff are aware of the complaints that have occurred about the airport, but I think the thing that we kept in mind in considering the residential here is that if you're going to buy a condo or rent a townhouse or something here, you're a different kind of person. You like that intense urban environment, you know, the lights of the ballpark, the noise of the ballpark, it's all part of the package. So we felt that the tenant here would probably be okay with this type of development.
And plus, they have to sign something, I'm sure.
That's correct, that's true. The notification.
Yeah. It kind of alerts them just in case they didn't know they were so close to the airport.
Right.
Okay. That's my concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes. Actually, Ms. Holland did start on something I was going to question. The residential mixed-use there on the corner of Lower Buckeye Parkway, what is the actual, I mean, if we're still talking about industrial sites with the Sun MP across the street, what are we looking at as the actual buffering area? I see that on 3.5 Concept Illustration, page 19, you have, you show a green belt and then the road. Is there the normal setbacks for industrial because of that small residential area or would we still in discussion stage on that?
Mayor, Councilman Osborne, again, this is the multifamily MXD parcel. And you're correct, that has very close relationship to, this property is the Sun MP and that is light industrial development, office development type park. There is a standard setbacks within Sun MP properties relative to this property. I believe that their plan shows actually backing up to this property line. So they would be, and then you would have the road itself with the diagonal parking and the three lanes that Raul mentioned. And then you would have the multifamily complex adjacent to it. It is close proximity.
Lower Buckeye Parkway, across the street from that, that's not industrial also?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, that is.
Yes, to the south also is Sun MP, which is also a light industrial.
But, okay.
And that property has frontage on that, so there would be light industrial, office development, fronting on Lower Buckeye Road. I believe it has the standard front setback of industrial 20, 30 feet for a building. Then you're separated by the road and then you have the multifamily. It is in close proximity.
Okay. One other question. The design guidelines, now, did you state that they were similar to the gateway design guidelines? I heard you mentioned something and I was reading while you stated it and I wasn't sure if it sounded like you said.
Yeah, Councilman Osborne, I believe my mark was in, was overall and general that the design guidelines contain the principles that are embodied within the city center for the northern area of Ballpark Village in terms of its urban environment, buildings, bringing buildings close to the street rather than setback, building architecture, landscape architecture, hardscape design, and other features that you would see in the city center area.
Is there, they do not have an actual color palette within their design guidelines? And do we have a color palette for the gateway design guidelines that can be? The reason I ask this is because it's obviously still being developed, it's vague. And then they mentioned in materials and color, it says bright contrasting colors shall be used for trims and accents only. What could be considered bright to them may be boring to me, sand. And so that's why I ask, because there's not real true definition here of color.
Mayor Councilman Osborne, the city center plan doesn't have a specific color palette, as I recall. It has a general description of maybe use of word of desert hues or things of that nature, I don't recall. And in the Wood Corporate Campus Ballpark Village PAD, no, there is not a color palette. It's early to decide that. That's something that, given the nature of this development, we're going to be spending a lot more time with the applicant as they proceed through the development process for their initial development, to develop those type of design, for more specific design guidelines.
Well, I state it now because I've seen color palettes come before and they were all color beige. And so I just want to state it now. Thank you.
Councilmember Sousa?
Yeah. Mr. Coons? How are you going to determine priority parking on game day?
Mayor Councilman Sousa, I believe within the development agreement, certainly has a stipulation within this zoning, but I believe it's controlled by development agreement, those are public spaces, city managed spaces. And I believe that there are subsequent management agreements that are going to be worked out that specifies, you know, that the parking, public parking for the facility for baseball or public events takes priority.
So we don't have retail, ballpark fan fighting for spaces?
There may be those times. If everyone is successful with a great facility and a large significant amount of mixed-use development, maybe that comes with progress and maybe you will have those. But I think they are going to be manageable and controlled by an agreement where certainly the public parking takes priority. Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Thank you. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a question on, I have this Ballpark Village development milestones dated 3/27. And I spoke to Brian about this today. We're still on target with these milestones, are we not? As John would know. Well, I assume they are, except...
I believe that's your milestones, right?
I'll have to find out. Mayor, Vice Mayor, could you specify if you're talking about? We have several milestone sheets.
I know. But with this, this is really the question, except I think this is what I hear is happening. With that, my concern then is the retail, how far behind this is the retail? The, I mean, breaking ground and getting things going with the retail?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for the question. It's a great question. We are on, we are on track. Our first priority has been to, number one, get the agreements done. Besides getting the Cleveland Indians here to get the agreements done. And then we're in the process, and I believe that Eric can speak more specifically to this, that we are in the process of designing the bowl, the configuration, the shape of the ballpark. And we're going to be going into the architecture design fairly soon. We've been focusing an awful lot on that. With these agreements, that frees us now with certainty to now be able to start to put together the private sector development around it. What we do know is that because council is guiding the city so well on retail development with the Vestar project and the West Core project, we do know that what we are is not going to be a primary retail center. What we believe that we are is we're going to be part of the employment district. That employment district will have plenty of office, it will have some residential in it, we believe hospitality, conferencing, conventioning. And with that, there will be the appropriate amount of retail that is required to be able to support that type of urban village, mixed-use, corporate type of campus development. And so the retail and the food and beverage experience will be part of that mix. And we don't see it as coming out with several hundred thousand square feet of retail at this point, but that will mature over a period of time.
And you don't have time, you don't have, at this time, you don't have timelines for that?
What we do know at this point is that we're going to start that process. We've actually started the process, will continue the process. We believe that it'll probably take us the balance of this year to put together the requisite partnerships to be able to start that. And I would anticipate that we'll get going on that next year sometime.
Thanks for breaking ground.
I think that we'll probably have the agreements placed, we'll probably go through design. I would love to be able to start breaking ground on a Phase 1 private development next year, but we're market-driven and we have a lot to put together.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, I just, you know, complimenting the Cleveland Indians for working with us and deservedly so, but this is sort of like a three-legged stool, that may be simplistic, but it's a three-legged stool, Cleveland, the city, and Rosewood Properties. And we want to thank Rosewood for your diligence, your expertise, and your collaboration with us. Obviously, you've sort of been the creative zeal in this project and we're very thankful for that. Just looking at the chart, one would see that possibly there's more financial gain through using that 50 acres for something other than a second ball team. And I think we all have high expectations and full confidence in Rosewood that you will continue to attempt to get us that second team. And, you know, I don't think it's an issue of, yes, it's an issue of when. And we need that second team in 21 months, when we need that second team. So I'm confident that that's, you're going to continue to strive to do that. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cavallier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
We'll do one more and then we'll break. Sorry, Carl, in montage, we'll still get to you as soon as we possibly can. I know it's getting late. Last one here on the baseball is to approve a notice of intent to enter into retail tax incentive.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for your diligence tonight. Very much appreciated. A lot of things that council's considered. And this is the last one we'll be bringing forward tonight related to baseball. This is pretty much the exact same thing that we brought to council back on April 23rd. And what the state statute requires is that we have a public notice if we're going to enter into a sales tax reimbursement agreement. And that part of the state statute requires a 14-day notice period. So what we did on April 23rd is we provided a notice, council adopted a resolution saying that we were going to have a public hearing on May the 14th. It was anticipated at that time that we were going to have all these agreements that you've considered tonight on the, considered by council on May 14th. We were close, we didn't quite make it. But what happened is, is we, it caused us to have to re-notice this. It's the same, it's not an additional $5 million sales tax reimbursement, it's the same thing that you considered before. All we're doing now is having a council consider resolution adopting notice of intent tonight. And then on June the 18th, we'll be bringing it back before council for public hearing as well as considering adopting the reimbursement agreement. One of the things I pointed out before on the land conveyance, the sales tax reimbursement agreement is tied to that. So I want to make sure that that's well-understood. So, and then the last thing is, is it requires that we have a third-party independent con- So, and then the last thing is, is it requires that we have a third-party independent consultant that considers the fiscal impact on the city. We need to, and that's been studied by applied economics. There will be a letter that's coming forward that will be in your packet for June 18th that talks about, here's why it makes sense financially, it meets all the state requirements, et cetera. So that's already been completed. It will be in your packet as we go forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Could I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 07-1154, approving a notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with Rose Properties Southwest LLC for the development of a hotel and retail and urban village component within Ballpark Village, a development that is to be constructed on the property where the city will be constructing a Major League Baseball spring training stadium and setting a public hearing.
Have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 07-1154, decided by the clerk.
I have a motion from Councilmember Holland, a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier, open for discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Okay, sincere compliments to all of us. Good job.
Congratulations.
That's great. How about eight o'clock on that one?
We'll go in about thirty seconds, thirty seconds. We'll try not to ask too many questions. You know, but we've been reached so many times, I'm just embarrassed to ask any questions.
Well, you shouldn't be.
And you, yeah, exactly.
Okay, we'll start her up and we'll consider a resolution to adopt a tentative budget. Fiscal Euro seven oh eight, Larry Land.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I will keep my comments relatively brief tonight as we go through the proposed tentative budget. Some of that is, I want to go through the process that we've been doing on this budget. Started in September where we had a discussion, we entitled Ensuring Financial Stability, which is really the first step in this budget process for the two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget. We talked about the cash flow models that we use, some underlying assumptions and so forth. In November, at a council advance, we discussed funding sources for the capital improvement plan and spent time laying the groundwork again for this year's budget. In March, we started again on the budget process in a discussion with the city council and discussed the financial plan, changes in assumptions as a result of changes in the economy and how that was impacting the budget. One of the goals that was established over this process was a goal of trying to focus on capital improvements and expand our ability to do capital projects as we go forward. April twenty-third, again, the city council met to review the budget and at that time we reviewed the revenues and an overview of the new money that was presented in the budget. April thirtieth, we had a special work session and spent a couple hours discussing the budget, going through some analysis and getting input from the city council. That was followed by another meeting on May fourteenth where we added in the carryovers, which represent funds that have been budgeted for in previous years that were carried over, that we're planning on carrying over to next year, so we have the expenditure authority to spend that money again. And with that, received additional input from the city council. So as you can see, there's been about five or six meetings where we've had input as we've gone through this process. As a result of that input, we revised the budget and we're bringing it back to you this evening for consideration of the tentative budget. As far as the legal adoption process in the budget, this is the first step. On June twenty-fifth, we will bring the budget back for final budget adoption. At that meeting, there will be a public hearing that will discuss the budget as well as the truth in taxation requirements. And then the city council will be asked to adjourn into a special meeting to adopt the final budget and then return to the regular city council meeting. On July ninth, there will be consideration for the property tax levy to be adopted to fund the budget and that also will be based on input received in the public hearing. Whoa, went way too far. I did it this time here, so if... Yes, I think I may have to, Eddie, if you wouldn't mind, since I don't see what I need here, to help me get back to where I want to go.
I think Eddie's non-existent back there.
There we go, we'll do it this way here. So what are our objectives for this evening? First, I want to review with you what changes we have made to the budget since our last discussion on May fourteen. The second item is that I want to provide an overview of the proposed tentative budget for the public that's viewing. Thank you, Eddie. And the third is ask the city council then to adopt the tentative budget. At the last meeting on the budget, the city council requests, or members of the city council request that we modify the budget to deal with, or to add some additional public safety funding. And so specifically, we added four police officers, one detective. Relating to that, also, we added one court clerk and an assistant prosecutor. All of those totaled approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to fund that, we took that out of the money that we had earmarked in the city manager's department for a number of different projects. It included the matrix assessment, it included the public safety citizens advisory committee recommendations for which this linked, as well as it included funding from a study that we're having done on technology and the employment corridor issues. So reducing that still leaves about one point five million dollars in that budget and those positions are funded as requested in that meeting. Any questions on that before I go to...
I'm going to ask a question and I apologize, I missed an email that I think some of my colleagues may have gotten, I may have misplaced it, but can you explain correlation, Keston? We had this conversation at the last meeting about four police, or a number of police officers adding a court clerk and adding a detective, which made me question, gosh, based on that comment, we ought to have a really robust court and a really robust prosecuting office.
Yes, sir.
If just five officers are going to then take two more staff here in the court.
Yes, sir. We asked for... Yes, we did, and that's a very good question and I think the implications here are that that might be true. The total increase in officers over this next, or for this next year requested in this budget, including the five that are here, are thirteen. And so some of this is the impact of those thirteen. I'll speak just on the court side. Also, there's an incremental increase from the previous year where the workloads are up currently about thirty percent, existing workloads increasing by thirty percent. So what we had is a culmination of events that these additional five officers, it's the incremental impact, it wasn't just those five officers, that we have those needs for one court and one assistant prosecutor. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you're answered, yeah, the collective, I just, it's interesting, I missed the email, so I had to ask.
Okay.
No, it's not your fault, I, some colleagues mentioned it and you just popped it up there and I forgot to ask it, ask it again.
Any other questions on that part? That's the only changes we made from the last presentation to the city council. So a very brief overview, I wanted to review where the sources of our funding in this budget are coming from. It starts at the very top center at thirty point five million dollars. That is the, from existing fund balances that we're projecting to exist at June thirtieth of this year. An additional sixty-eight million dollars is project carryovers. Those are projects that were budgeted for in the two thousand six, two thousand seven budget, but were projected not to be completed by June thirtieth. That is actually a number that we estimated back in late February to early March. And that number will change, but we put it at the high number to make sure we get that coverage. As that number changes, the actual dollars will be put in the budget office and released to the project only once we know what the actual amounts are on June thirtieth. About ninety-two million dollars of our revenue sources come from what we call operating revenues, which would include our property taxes, sales taxes, state shared revenues, user fees, and those types of revenues. An additional seventy-four million dollars is for bond proceeds. Approximately half of those bond proceeds were for the general obligation bonds that we had on earlier in this agenda. And the remaining, approximately thirty-seven million dollars, would be additional bonds that we would plan on selling next year or by June of this upcoming year, assuming that the projects are completed sufficiently at that time. Other capital revenues of fifty-nine million dollars include development impact fees of approximately twenty million dollars and they include the construction sales tax revenues as well as reimbursement from developers for projects that are included within our budget. And the large number there is a hundred and ninety million dollars and that number represents special financing for special projects. Two specific projects jump up that use the bulk of this, seventy-five million dollars for the proposed spring training facility, of which the financing mechanisms are just starting to go forward, and an additional seventy-five million dollars for the improvement district, the McDowell Commercial Corridor or for the West Core Mall. Both of those projects have been planned for for considerable time. The improvement district actually will be paid back by the property owners, but they must be included in our budget to reflect the transactions and meet the requirements of state law. And so where does that five hundred and fifteen million dollars go? This chart shows that approximately two hundred and five million dollars of that is going towards what we're calling new money type projects. That includes the operations and we'll have a chart that shows the breakdown of some of that coming up next. But that does include fund balance at times and includes the spending also for the operation maintenance, capital equipment, and some of the capital improvement plan. You'll notice the same sixty-eight point five million is reflected in the top left side of that pie. That sixty-eight point five million reflects the same carryover that was on the previous page as does the hundred and ninety dollars for the special projects. Going down a layer, combining the new money, the fund balance and the annexation, our operating expenditures for the upcoming year for all funds is estimated to be approximately seventy-nine million dollars. The capital projects are estimated at about a hundred and one million dollars. The contingency that is a set aside that we have to meet our charter requirements and to meet our fiscal stability is estimated at twenty million dollars. Equipment in one time costs at sixteen million dollars, debt service at ten point four million and other miscellaneous expenditures at approximately twelve million dollars. The operating expenses, I thought I would show you what those expenses are by department. The police department is approximately twelve and a half million dollars. Fire department, eleven million. Public works, which includes the streets, the buildings, parks, sanitation, combined for a total of twenty point seven million. Water and wastewater, those two utilities combined for eleven point two million. Development services, which includes community development and engineering, combined for nine point one million. And all of the remaining departments then combined for approximately fifteen million dollars. And finally, I wanted to show the changes in authorized positions as a result of this budget. The budget adopted a year ago included four hundred and seventy-one positions. Eleven positions were added mid-year. And so in the proposed budget, the remaining positions, three were funded through existed, existing budget funding. Nine and a half positions funded by the annexation of the property, the Sonoran Valley annexation. New money funded fifty-eight point five positions. All of those were in previous presentations and then the seven positions we talked about a few minutes ago were funded at this, to get to that total.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
What time of year do you expect to be about five sixty? I know you're going to be hiring as soon as possible.
Many of the positions are going through the process to be hired by July first. However, based on the discussions that we had in this budget process linked to the matrix assessment, we're waiting for the final draft on a couple of the departments that, that there were recommendations there involving staff sizing being too high to start with. And as we discussed at that point, the filling of those positions will link to the final closure of that project. I think the target at that time established as a staff was to get as many of these positions filled by the end of September, I believe.
Larry is correct, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I think the exception to that obviously will be police and fire, which may take twelve months to actually get them to a point that they're physically being able to contribute on the street because of the training schedules and things like that. And I think police and fire aggregate to between thirty and forty total?
Yes, it'll be about thirty-five approximately.
So maybe thirty-five of the additional bodies would come out, be delayed in that process. But by Christmas, all but thirty-five, so we would have five hundred and twenty-five on staff with the remaining thirty-five.
And the pay raises for this year are how much?
The pay ranges were raises, yes. The overall increase in that was three point one percent.
So, so basically, everybody's pay went up three point one, not more or on anybody?
The three point one percent was the adjustment in the pay ranges themselves. Then in addition to that would be any increases warranted out of the merit system, which could be two and a half percent, five percent, or zero, depending on performance.
The three point one is a function of the market analysis.
Okay. And then the merit is above the three point one?
That is correct. Is there any other questions? Otherwise, thank you. Since you saw it before, I had to get this slide in.
I got a follow-up on the mayor's question. Of the four hundred and seventy-one positions we have approved for this year, how many of those lie vacant right now? Do we have a number on, an active number on that?
Oh, the four eighty-two?
Four seventy-one, pardon me, thank you, four eighty-two.
There's probably about thirty-five vacancies right now.
Thirty-five vacancies due to?
Promotions.
Attrition, promotions, all that, okay. Is that pretty, pretty consistent as we've seen? I mean, that's what, roughly eight percent of the workforce or so, seven, eight percent of the workforce?
That's right. We have, we have one position that we still do not have filled that was a new position. All the rest have been filled that were, you know, new positions or mid-year increases. And then out of the seventy-eight positions, we already have three of those filled that are being proposed and sixteen have already been advertised and the other fifty-six are being worked on by the departments. So progress is being made on those.
So between the, between the ones we add to the new budget and the thirty-five that you have lying vacant, you've...
We've filled a hundred and fifty or so positions so far this year, full-time authorized positions. Been boring.
Larry, you mentioned that out of the report that we received, I'm assuming you're talking about the one that Matrix did, that made a comment about some of the departments were overstaffed. But, you know, maybe that's not always on the surface because a lot of the work that they had to do, they saw the number and they looked at the managers, et cetera. So we still will review all those and make some decisions based on whether or not they were overstaffed. We may not be, maybe just a lot of managers and not enough, not enough workers hired yet, you know, that type of thing. So I just, because I heard you say that before and it just kind of concerns me that you're taking it for a beta and didn't, didn't should have taken it that way.
I think a couple of things, the report that has been received, that you have seen copies of, is still a draft. There is a final version yet to come, is my understanding. And I think at that point in time, also, there was going to be a dialogue and what we really were saying, I think what we communicated was as part of the closure on that issue is how that, those positions would be handled.
Right, okay. And I think they're all accounted for in our present budget, is what I was making sure that we have uncovered. I don't want someone to say, well, too, too many people in this department will make the decision to cut some of them out and I don't want to do that.
I think that's what Larry's saying, is that still may occur based on the, once the final draft, once the final is done of the matrix and we sit down and collaborate between the policy side and the management side, we may say to ourselves, hey, there's a shift from, you know, ex-planner ones to ex-planner twos or, you know, ex-firefighters to ex-engineers or a variety of other things may still occurs. But I've always understood going through the process, this year. So you may in fact see some shifts.
Well, that wasn't, shifting is fine, I just didn't want anyone to be cut, is what I was...
None of those positions were eliminated from this budget. What we talked about was the process of how those positions would be filled.
Yeah, I mean, if we're continuing the dialogue here, I don't think we're necessarily talking about job elimination, we're talking about making sure that we've got the right people doing the right things in the right place at the right time sort of conversation. So maybe, you know, do we have the appropriate number of people working on annexation versus current develop, you know, existing development or, you know, some, some things like that as you're reading, as you're reading that. It's not necessarily, you know, delete this job or delete this...
It was relating to one specific department, the way I remember it, and I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing adverse that was happening with that department without a lot of discussion on our part.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, as it relates to the comments, staff has not seen the total document. We have not seen the calculations, the formulas by which the consultant had reached the conclusions that they have. And thus, we're in a position, we really cannot ascertain their two thousand and five data against their formula as to its appropriateness in a two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget process. So what we need to do is see the report, we need to be able to review the calculations to see if the circumstances are still as they are bringing them forward and then analyze that against each and every department to see the appropriateness of moving forward with the recommendations we've advanced to you. At the same time, how many of those recommendations really belong in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine budget discussion? We do not want to create a situation where in seven, eight, we hire a bunch of individuals that don't belong in the two thousand eight, nine discussion either. So moving them around to appropriate departments, et cetera, is a possibility. We're having to go on the best data available, which was that the report came after the departments had already submitted their requests and we still haven't seen the final report. And until we have all the data on the table at the same time, I can't reach a conclusion to make a recommendation with the assistance of all the departments to the council on exactly where we should go. We do believe that it's very appropriate to move ahead and have all the positions that have been identified put into the process for classification, for recruitment. And we're hopeful that we'll have the report in time to aid us in, between now and September, between now and December, that some of those positions may in fact be moved to more appropriate functions, activities, assignments that would further the organization's ability to be successful.
Okay, that sounds good, I understand what you're saying. I assume that with the draft, that the staff has had an opportunity to look at that and has put in their own rebuttals to any of the comments that were made in the draft.
With, within each department, each department only, the director has been the sole person to rebut the consultant's comments, recommendations, et cetera. The, at the management level, we've been able to look at more of a global perspective about how does this work in a bigger picture, but again, without any calculations, without knowing where the formulas come from. Some are east coast formulas, some are west coast formulas, some are mid-coast formula. And we have ranges, we have no idea what the low end of the range is and the high end of the range, because in some instances, we may very well be best in class in some of the stuff that we're doing. So we have some work to do, but we're, everybody's gearing up for the opportunity to get the report over the next several weeks and begin to roll up your sleeves and address that.
Thank you.
Okay, comments from the public. Saying that, ask clerk to read the resolution by Tyalona.
Adopt resolution...
Adopt Resolution 07-1155, adopting the tentative estimates of the amounts required for the public expense for the city of Goodyear for the fiscal year 2007, 2008, adopting a tentative budget, setting forth the receipts and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year. The amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, giving notice of the time for hearing tax papers for adopting a budget and fixing the tax levies.
Have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 07-1155, as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Holland, second from Councilmember Antoniak, it's open for discussion. Ball call, please.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six, zero.
Thank you.
Next item is consider adopting an ordinance to rezone 8,875 acres in Sonoran Valley, planning area, Brett Burningham.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, members of the public. This is a request for preliminary planned area development zoning for 8,875 acres in the Sonoran Valley planning area. Earlier this year, a general plan amendment for the Sonoran Valley was approved, and the council has already seen a final PAD for Area 1, the 690. This vicinity map, well, is intended to get you oriented with the subject property. You can see Amaranth is, is in red here, the Maricopa-Panama County line here. Goodyear's planning boundary is outlined in orange, it's a little, little difficult to see. The yellowish colored areas are BLM. You can see the Sonoran Desert National Monument in this area here. And State Route 238 going through this area here. So the, the areas shown in red here are included in this preliminary PAD application today. And this exhibit just essentially zooms in on that. So you can see that the purple areas are properties owned by Montage Holdings. The white areas are held by private property owners. The blue is state land, the, the light green is BLM. And you can also see the landfill site in the Luthanza airstrip training facility. Continuing on, the preliminary PAD, as you'll note in your packet, there's several different planning areas. There's approximately 11 planning areas. There's six residential villages, there's a downtown village, there's a regional center village, and there are employment center planning areas. The planning areas will include a village center with commercial type uses, and then you'll see residential uses surrounding them. This exhibit is the land use plan. And, and again, just to clarify, this is a preliminary planned area development, a preliminary PAD. As you can see in this exhibit, you're just seeing basic land use classifications. Each village in the future will come forward again, and you will see final PADs for each village. And at that time, you'll see a conceptual allotting plan, and you'll see much more detail as you did when the 690 final PAD came before you. However, the, the preliminary PAD does identify the potential build-out, the potential number of dwelling units. And it shows you the amount of retail and employment uses, and the provision of public facilities associated with the application. And I'm going to move here to a, just a little table here. The general plan, the Goodyear's general plan considers that the, oh, we've got some wind. The general plan states that the, the lowest number of each residential land use designation is the, is the target or the, or the baseline. And the general plan notes that the city supports the baseline or the low point. But, but the general plan also notes that applicants can go, you can see the baseline is shown here, based on the amount of acres that are provided in this PAD. The general plan states that you can, in this case, move up to the maximum if certain criteria are met that are outlined in the general plan and the zoning ordinance, specifically innovative subdivision standards, innovative subdivision design, innovative architecture, additional amenities and public facilities that may be provided. What, what I'm trying to show you here is the general plan would show the baseline at this point for this PAD. However, based on the configuration of the preliminary PAD, based on what the developer has, what the applicant has been providing, they have used the midpoint for this preliminary PAD, and they have identified that they would like the 42,476 dwelling units. And this is based on an expectation that, that all of the future final PADs will provide at a minimum the innovative architectural standards, innovative subdivision standards, enhanced public facilities and amenities, as I, as I mentioned. And when this case was presented to the Planning Commission on March 16th, the, the commission discussed this. They wanted to make sure that if the 42,476 units were being approved with this preliminary PAD, that the future PADs would in fact come forward with innovative proposals in the final PADs. And Joe Porter of Montage Holdings assured the commission that the community, the future communities would in fact have innovative developments. Chairman Gelsner stated in the meeting that the commission and the council will hold the final PADs to this standard and will reject any final PADs that do not conform to the level of quality that are set forth in this preliminary PAD. And stipulation number 16 outlines this, this requirement. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning, subject to stipulations, with the unanimous vote of five to zero. Just so the, the council's aware, we did have two neighborhood meetings. We had a meeting in City Hall. We also met with the residents in the Mobile Elementary School. We had a lot of people come out to see the development plans. There was no opposition in any of those meetings. And if I could refer you to the stipulations now, there, you'll see that there are a number of stipulations to, to help the future buyers become aware of the existing uses and potential nuisances that are, that are in the area or will be in the area. You'll see that there's stipulations notifying people of the Luthanza Airport, Waste Management's landfill, the Union Pacific Railroad, State Route 238, existing private airstrips located in the area. And finally, the El Paso natural gas line and 500 KV overhead electric power lines associated with the easement corridor along the Rainbow Valley Road alignment. An, an additional item to convey to the council. Last week, I believe, we received a, we recently received some comments from Waste Management in regards to the preliminary PAD. They requested some minor changes and asked that those changes be, be made to the preliminary PAD. We had already printed your, your packets and delivered those to you. But we have made a handful of relatively minor changes, added notes, added minor clarifications to the text of the preliminary PAD. And Waste Management has reviewed those changes, and they, they are, they are pleased with the changes that were made. They wanted to make sure that, that those were, those changes were made. And we have submitted a revised PAD booklet to the clerk. And finally, just along with that, associated with that, stipulation number one would need to be updated because the date on the binder is May 21st, 2007. So we, we just asked the clerk to update stipulation number one accordingly. And this would conclude staff's presentation. We're available to answer any questions. Also, the applicant is available. Mr. Joe Porter, Mr. Garth Wiegert are also available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Applicant?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, thank you very much for hearing this tonight. We, we can't express how much we appreciate the staff's effort that's gone into getting us here. I think we've presented this before and we've discussed it. I don't believe there's any reason for us to say anymore. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the public?
Mr. Members of the council, Dustin Jones with Tiffany and Bosco on behalf of Waste Management of Arizona. And wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff as well as Montage Holdings for their cooperation as Waste Management, being a large landfill operator, reacts to development on its doorstep. And we have been involved in this process, the public process, working with staff and working with Montage for about a year now. And we want to state very emphatically on the record that it's been a good cooperative effort that we've had, both with city staff as well as with Montage, to work out our issues, to make the land use on the general plan application compatible, excuse me, compatible with the uses that take place at the Butterfield landfill site. Wanted to show you and remind you once again where we're at with respect to the landfill and the access to the site. This is the current Butterfield landfill site, as noted in, in the Amaranth application, as well as the additional holdings by Waste Management. Also want to note on this map here, again, the access that we have to the site. Most of the trucks, as we stated on the record throughout this public process, between 300 and 500 of those trucks travel down State Route 238, primarily coming from the east. Access at 91st Avenue, make a right-hand turn and go north along 91st Avenue, and access the landfill at this corner, the southeast corner. This is 99th Avenue and Van Buren Road, that's the alignment there. And the landfill's been in operation for a number of years now and has grown accustomed to that access. And as we've gone through this process of, of working through the land use plans that have been proposed around here, have taken note that the, the county has permitted this landfill. It went through the entitlements process in the county. There is, it was a 50-year time period placed on the special use permit that was obtained by the county. We're about, we have about 45 years left on that special, special use permit. The county, in trying to restrict the access to the site and wanting to maintain, wanting to have full disclosure in, in the community as to where the trucks will be driving, recorded a non-vehicular access easement, a vehicular access easement, I should say, around the site, all the way around the entire site, that prohibits vehicles, any of the trucks, from accessing the site from any point around. All the trucks must access the southeast corner. And so, which is why you see the access route that you have here on the, on the map. As you look at the general plan that was approved by the council, again, just refreshing recollection of this here. Want to again note the access that's being proposed here along 238. This here is 91st Avenue, and then the access would go through here. The proposal that Amaranth has right now, the village center, the village core, the commercial core, is along this route. And want to refresh the council's recollection and refresh the public's recollection that we have gone on record for about a year stating that this is the current access route. We need to protect that access route. But we also want to note the fact that we have worked very, very diligently with Montage Holdings over the past six, seven months to work out an exchange agreement whereby Waste Management will be able to exchange the property that they own here, as again on the other map that showed the property here along this side that is being owned by Waste Management, exchange that for property that, that Montage owns on this side. And we have been having a draft that's gone back and forth and actually received comments from Montage Holdings attorney on Friday on a draft that we submitted to them. We've been working internally, reviewing those comments, and believe that very, very soon, we will have an executed agreement that will allow for us to exchange the property with Montage Holdings. If we're able to do so, again, as we've disclosed fully to the council and to the public, if we're able to do so, it would be Waste Management's intention to explore the opportunity of moving that access to the western side of the property, therefore avoiding having the 300 to 500 trucks coming up Main Street of Amaranth and entering the landfill. Now, at this point, we have no guarantees, but we're very optimistic that the discussions are going forward in a positive manner. We're going to continue working out the agreement. And then we have also had discussions with the, the city staff about treatment of the landfill and how to, to work with the city and make sure that this landfill, whether in the city of Goodyear or it remains in the county, becomes, or continues to be a good neighbor. We have, again, want to thank staff, thank council for working with us, thank Mr. Wiegert for his patience, as he has belabored our, our issues and maybe potentially whining at Dustin Jones at times about different issues that respect, that deal with the landfill. But again, it's been, it's been a good process. We respect the process and appreciate staff for keeping us in the loop all the way through. And thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Further comments from the public?
Question for Mr. Jones, is that okay?
You can do it now or we'll get to him later.
Well, real, real quick, you talked about, put, put the thing back up there on the wall if you would. You talked about, well, you talked about the non-vehicular access around your main Amaranth. How, if, if you remained in a county, would you have to go back to the county to, you'd have to go back to the county to request that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, in order to have that, that easement that surrounds the property lifted, yes, we would have to go back to the county and have them lift that. And that obviously would trigger us to having discussions with the city of Goodyear with respect to the access to the site. So there are a variety of.
Would that come under solely our jurisdiction if you came into the city?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, if the property was annexed into the city of Goodyear, it would come into the city's jurisdiction.
That wasn't me.
No, it's the phone in front of Councilmember Sousa has all of a sudden become possessed, but. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, further comments from the public? Okay, ask clerk to read the ordinance by title, please.
Adopt Ordinance 07-1074, providing for conditional rezoning of approximately 8,875,000 acres, generally located in the southern portion of Goodyear-Sonoran Valley planning area from the agricultural, agricultural urban, single-family residential, and general commercial zoning districts to the preliminary planned area development zoning district, adopting supplementary zoning map number 07-002 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 07-1074, amending stipulation number one to read May 21st, 2007, striking April 26th, 2007.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Sousa. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Osborne?
I know, I've seen this many times, but I don't know that I've ever asked the open space that goes along the lay of the land with the railroad. Help me imagine how that is, if there's parks. I mean, right now, I can imagine, imagine this green belt with the railroad. Kids are playing and they run across the railroad. And so, help me imagine how that is going to be set up.
Can you, can I tag on to that? And can you explain how you're going to address that if there's three railroads, three railroad lines through there, not just the single one that exists today?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Chairman Person Osborne, Councilperson Antoniak. That was the first question you asked when you were planning commission.
I still remember. Okay, remind me.
It was a wonderful answer that just stuck with you, I can tell.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Was that a year ago?
That, that was. That, that open space is on the south side. And, and the plan is to, is to burn both the railroad and the highway on both sides. And we're already starting that for the first 690. But our, in fact, the first thing Garth said to me when, when he introduced me to this project was, we need to separate that corridor, it goes through our project, we can't do anything about it. We need to separate it, we need to great-separate the crossings. We need to great-separate the crossings. We need to get traffic through, including traffic to Waste Management, and not have it be part of the community. So, so we need to burn it. So, so there'll be the three lanes of track, the highway, which will probably be an urban freeway at some point in time, burms on both sides. So, little kids won't, won't be able to get to it. The reason the open space, there, there will be open space along the north side in, in various spots, and, and the soccer complex in the 690 is part of that. The reason it's shown continuously on the south side is water flows from south to north. Well, here you can, there you can see the cross section, but this is the railroad corridor. This is the, the freeway. This is the berm on the south. This is the berm on the north. The reason there's continuous open space on the south side is water flows from south to north, and we contemplate that that will be a good place to, to, to catch floodwater because there are only certain places that it can cross the track. Okay? And so, it will be, it will be an open space corridor. We have identified in the plan two major east-west corridors that will allow people to get from the community to the east and west into surrounding BLM land. And we've moved them, those major pedestrian corridors are back a little way from, from the, from the freeway because we're going to have great separated crossings, and we just aren't sure right now of the feasibility of having that continuous pedestrian system along the north side and the south side. So it's, it's, it's thought of as an amenity, but also a functional amenity.
Okay. And, and so, you've already asked for Rob's question. I counted for three lines, then. You hit them to three tracks.
They have, they have their, I believe it's 200-foot right-of-way. They have a very wide right-of-way, and they're planning three tracks. And it's a, to us, it's the same thing. Cross one or cross three. It's, it's going to, we're either going to go under or over, and it'll be great separated, absolutely. We're counting.
Two of those are freight, and one of those would be a commuter?
You know, the only, the only thing we know now is Union Pacific is in the process of, of, of establishing the second line. They, they contemplate at some point in time there'll be a third line, and, and I, I don't believe we've ever heard about the characteristics of those.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. The only other comment that I had, just to, to give at the beginning of the game here, is you've done a great job at emphasizing education being a top priority. And also, I know that you're, you're trying to be innovative, and, and that's the point of giving you the higher density. To add to that, I'm just hoping that we'll be seeing a little bit of some public art and maybe some innovation in streetlights and street signs, things like that, to add to, you know, just making it a little more, I don't want to say upscale, but just more innovative. And also, you did a wonderful job with soccer fields, but there is another word that's called football. And I, I mean our football. I don't mean the other football. Please try to think about that sometimes in your, your park analysis, that the football fields are not being sought after, and we, we're losing that, and I appreciate it.
Okay, as part of our development agreement, we're working on a parks and open space master plan for the Sonoran Valley area that extends beyond our land. We're doing that jointly with the staff, and that, that is going to take a comprehensive look at all of the, all of the athletic venues.
Right. Well, some people think of soccer can be used as football, but unfortunately, they go at the same season, and so it doesn't work. So I just had to put that up there. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion, comments?
I had the same concern that Joyra had on the, on the railroad. And I'd be cautious. I mean, they're going to be great separated, but it's not going to keep kids out of there. So just a little caution in how you answer that in the future, in the sense that he fits. I mean, I, I look at that, and you look at the crossings we have now, and they're not, they don't keep kids out of there by any means. I mean, it's up to parenting and those of us that are in public safety and other arenas to educate the public about the interaction with the railroad. So just a little word caution.
Point well taken.
Do we, do we, we're on the point of railroad, beyond the pedestrian crossings, will you all have or will establish relationships with UP to make sure that we're separating homes appropriately from the UP as it relates to hazardous materials passing through that corridor?
Yes.
Let me ask a question of staff. What's, for a single-family detached, what's the minimum density in this development? Excuse me, let me ask that. What's the minimum size frontage on a lot?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, we have to keep in mind, this is just preliminary P A D. At this point in time, they have, they have established ranges for residential categories. I believe that, let's see, 35 feet would be the first. If you recall, the 690, there were, what, 34 feet? Was the, I believe, the smallest single-family detached. And Joe has indicated that we will likely see similar.
Well, these are, what are these preliminary platforms for?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the preliminary plat that you saw was the second phase of Area 1. When you saw the 690 final P A D, you also saw half of that with a preliminary plat. The plat that you saw tonight is the, the latter half of that. Let me show you this exhibit. Hold on. I'm going to zoom in just on the 690 from this here. This is the 690. When you saw the final P A D, you saw a plat for this area. Tonight, you've, you're talking about the remaining portion of that, the larger lots for the 690. Can I answer your question?
So what, what is the minimum lots, lot frontage in this particular pad?
Mayor Kavanaugh, for this particular preliminary P A D, I would defer to the applicant to identify-
For a single-family detached?
Yes, I understand. Here, I've got it. Mayor Kavanaugh and, and council members, this is the 690 P A D, and, and as Brett indicated, it's been broken into two preliminary plats. One covers the south half and one covers the north half. In the south half, which was previously approved, the minimum lot width is 35 feet. In the north half, which was approved tonight, the minimum lot size is 55 feet.
And ranges to anywhere from-
75 plus.
So, so how are we getting 4.4 units per acre? Is it all because of this 690 down here? Is that the key element?
In this first phase, in the first 690, we're not, we're not going to be at 4.4 because we don't have enough commercial started yet. We don't have enough kind of critical mass to get higher density. So this is, this is going to be overall one of the lower-density villages. It has also, it has a pretty high percentage of open space because of the soccer fields and this open space area and the two schools in, in such a small area.
Are we, I guess, Harvey, are we facing a question from our developers north of this area? We've been demanding density in the 2 to 2.8 to 3.2. We have a problem there?
Mayor, council, we have held the line in terms of the target density in the general plan and required that, that if you wanted to exceed that target, to provide for additional amenities, if that's what you're referring to, in, in other parts of the community. However, since the, with these master plan communities in Estreem Mountain Ranch, we're seeing the same trend in Amarinth. The, when you have a massive community that's, you know, has a build-out of 30, 50 years, you have to provide a wide range of lot sizes. And I don't believe, in those kinds of environments, that it's appropriate to have that wide range of lot sizes. You can't have just your standard single-family developments. In the areas you're referring to in West Goodyear, where we had the MOU and the 16 property owners, we were dealing with multiple property owners that were going to develop mostly single-family detached lots. It wasn't part of a master plan community. We kind of held the line, said you, as a, as a rule of thumb, you had to meet the target density unless you provided some additional amenities. And in this particular development, there's numerous amenities that are being provided in terms of the soccer field complex, the dedication of school sites, and other factors like that. Hope I, I think that I answered your question.
Mayor, for what it's worth, I represented those property owners. I think, I think it's also relevant to Portau that that, in that area of the city, you had a very low density on your general plan. So all of those, those owners were dealing with a low density to begin with, and they were seeking to increase that density by virtue of the infrastructure that was being done. This is a particular area where there's a different general plan designation. So as far as a person like me would go, they're apples and oranges.
Yeah, it's really hard to deal with something this immense. And I, I sometimes I think, Nick, you brought that up in the past, that when we get hit with something really large, we don't always do it the way we'd like to.
We're novices.
And those that were very large were miniscule compared to this one. This is huge. Any other comments?
Question on the electric. Are, are you running a, you'll need to put in a relay station. Will there be an electric line going in, your, your power lines?
Vice Mayor Cavalier, that sounds like a question for Tim Keenan.
Oh, I knew it was.
And we'll set up, there'll probably be four substations within this property, so that those substations, each substation handles about one meg, and that is equivalent to about 10,000 homes per meg. So that, what that does is, so with those four substations, it'll set up throughout the community to serve the community electrically.
And your power lines coming in?
Power line's actually already there. It's on the front edge of the property. And what APS did was they started when the refinery and the super collider projects were in this area, they started an upgrade of that line that went through the Sonora National Monument from the west through the project that connects Hila Bend to Maricopa. So that, once we have the load that necessitates bringing that line further, then that whole system will connect up. It'll be, it'll connect to the overall grid of the community.
So you've got that all taken care of?
I think so.
Far as your placement of your stations and all this?
Substations. We're, we're in talking to APS right now, but we're going to give them substations, locations, so that shouldn't be a problem whatsoever.
Okay, good.
All new fiber optic system running through the community.
Right.
We're starting from scratch, so we have the opportunity to do some pretty special things out here.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Well, I, I, I was just going to comment on the remarks back and forth on the density issue. You know, I think we're, we're so far out there, you got to make a go at a sustainable community down south, and the densities will support that. You know, will help support a somewhat sustainable. I mean, it's, it's a totally different animal, and it's a, we're somewhat participants in the same experience, you know, in the experiment down south, if you will. So, just don't know if it, just another perspective.
Higher density?
Higher density. You got, I mean, you got to make a go. You're 15, 20 miles removed from everything. You got to make a go at sustaining yourself and building something that will sustain itself. Density will support the commercial, which will support-
Takes more than density.
The future development. No, it does, definitely takes more than, takes more than density.
They said that to Keating 20 years ago.
True. True. You got to make a go.
I know, but the thing is, you're talking 40,000 homes, right? 8,000 acres. That's 100,000 people. And this is only a small part of the total 67 acres. How many acres is this, or square miles? Yeah?
Nine foot?
It's two-thirds. I mean, it's two-thirds. So we're talking about 100,000 of them today, is that right? Okay, further comments? Okay, uh, did we ask the clerk to read this? Yes, ready for roll call, hold.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Last item is the Phoenix Goodyear Airport Master Plan. We want to thank Carl for being patient with us. I know it was, it's, it's challenging. Uh, who's got this one? Karen Craver?
Thank you, Mayor. As was presented to you at your work session in the beginning of April, the Phoenix Goodyear Master Plan was prepared in order to accommodate future aviation demand at the airport. And this is the recommended concept, being recommended by city staff, or city of Phoenix staff, also our staff, and the Planning Advisory Committee that reviewed the proposal. The alternative proposes a second runway south of the existing one, will be about half the length and half the width. And then there will be other airport hangars and corporate hangars along the north side of the existing runway, and opportunities for future aviation business activities here. The Phoenix Aviation staff is here to answer any technical questions you may have, and they are looking for your recommendation to their city council of this concept.
Okay, thank you. Carl, would you like to say anything, or?
Mayor and council members, very briefly, again, first and foremost, congratulations on a wonderful evening here with regard to all that is taking place with the, with the stadium and that sort of thing. I think this is just great, and it was actually fun to be here to hear that business being transacted. First and foremost, I'd just take a moment to thank, again, you know, the folks who've been partners with this all along the way with regard to this issue. Councilwoman Holland, Councilman Antoniak, Brian Dolke, of course, from the staff here, as well as Gary Gilzer from the Planning Commission. As you know, this airport is kind of unique in that it lies entirely within the city of Goodyear, although the city of Phoenix owns it. Our interest is, is totally in ensuring that this is going to be something that is going to support the folks in the city of Goodyear and in the, in the West Valley here, and we believe that this plan does that, and would encourage your recommendation to the Phoenix City Council to approve the plan. With that, I'll bid you good night, unless you have other questions.
Okay, comments from the public? Could I have a motion to approve the Phoenix Goodyear Airport Master Plan?
I move that we recommend to the Phoenix City Council approval- I move that we recommend to the Phoenix City Council approval of the Phoenix Goodyear Airport Master Plan, recommended concept presented at the council, I believe, in 2007.
Second. Okay, it's open for discussion. How's it looking, Phoenix, for this one? Is that right? Yeah, I didn't say that, did I? What I had never heard is the timeframe for this. What, what are we expecting?
The city council, and, as far as the city, kind of concerned at that point in time, is basically done deal. And I guess I sent it to Q to do some other things with regard to FAA grant funding, state grant funding, that sort of thing. So, we're right at the end of the first long road, a little more than two years in terms of the entire process. And we look for just a great thing to happen there.
And construction?
Construction, to, to a large degree, is going to be determined by grant funds that everybody will come into the airport, as well as, we're looking to make the airport a little more transparent, so that people can go to the airport.
So, we're looking several years? Okay, well, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Pose. And I sign at 6-0.
Thank you.
Opportunity for our member of council to prize the public on current events, current activity. Opportunity, just, it was a nice opportunity the other night, the public safety number of us attended it. It was very well put together, and just great to hear the personal stories of your men and women, both in the fire and police, and your supporting services. Opportunity for city manager, summary of current events and reports from tonight.
We only have comments about those follow-up items this evening. Out of the community facility district discussion, there will be, in June 18th meeting, information follow-up, primarily relating to special assessments and tax structures. As it relates to the regular agenda, there is a need to have a discussion on the 18th in terms of the voter-approved bond, or, and how those, what facilities, et cetera, are going to be benefited by that. There is also an opportunity, given the amount of bonds that will be remaining capacity, maybe there's a need for a bond committee. Staff was asked to form a committee with council members to develop a policy with regards to use of the stadium suite and tickets on an annual basis. There was a question raised about the electric lines on Estreem Parkway. We're going to go back and double-check. We believe that part of that has already been bonded for, and at what stage those should actually be brought to construction. Preliminary indication is that this would be put in construction, buried as a result of the northbound lanes on Estreem Parkway, so the third lane. There was a question raised about having enough lights on the practice fields, and therefore, we're going to have to go back and look at our CIP, and how we can get those financed, since the stadium district does not finance those outside of major league. In August, we will be bringing information about the wastewater capacity and ensuring that there's capacity for the stadium. The color palette for the Wood Corporate Campus needs further discussions at staff level, and bring back information to the city council, so that a broad array of colors, et cetera, can be addressed. Further, that we have 21 months left to secure a second team. I think that that was the list that was discussed this evening.
There's 21 months to secure a second team at the current price per 50 acres?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Means adjourned.